Okay. We might as well get started with the Summer Street corridor study discussion. So, I see that we have our traffic consultant here, Bob Michel. And Bob, maybe you could just go through what you found looking at the traffic situations generated by the broken stone sites.
Okay, great. What I've done is to prepare an overview of key findings that are based on a series of efforts that began back in the spring of this year and recently concluded some additional observations later in the summer and fall. So, really, this is just a preliminary finding presentation. It's not intended to be a comprehensive analysis of every aspect of what we studied and really is intended to provide an overview to the board as well as to members of the Traffic and Sidewalk Committee and Police Department Engineering on where this study is headed. We do anticipate that as we roll out our initial findings, that we'll be having a series of additional conversations that will allow us to refine some of the recommendations that come up out of the study. So, with that, we'll start. The basis of the quarter evaluation really stems back to the mass broken stone site and their condition approval through the zoning board December 2000. That decision specifically required that the mass broken stone applicant provided escrow funding that would achieve two objectives. One, to fund traffic monitoring of their impacts to local street systems within Weston, and secondly, to provide a pool of monies that could be used to implement mitigation actions along identified routes based on that monitoring. A series of monitoring reports have been submitted and reviewed by my firm, and the nature of those indicate that there are documented impacts to Summer Street in particular. About 25 to 30 percent of the activity that's generated by the mass broken stone site is oriented to or from the west of Route 20, and about 10 percent of the overall site activity for what is now Biogen IDEC can be tracked directly to the Summer Street corridor. It, in fact, serves as a convenient alternate way of getting to that particular commercial development from Route 30. We also know, and there's a basis that suggests there are traffic influences to that specific quarter, Summer Street, that relate to Route 128, I-95. No surprise that Summer Street acts as a convenient bypass to events that might occur on Route 128. If there was an incident on Route 128, Summer Street is a convenient bypass to that for folks who might be traveling from, say, the Framingham area north and vice versa, back to that Metro West area. To understand how we undertook this evaluation, we had to first step back and understand the regional context of traffic and how that relates to the Summer Street corridor. We know for certain, and many of us who use Route 128 on a regular basis, know that it is subject to severe congestion. We also know that, based on our prior evaluations on behalf of the town, that there is in excess of 13 million square feet of planned growth that will directly impact that same quarter. And the result of that really is what we refer to as peak spreading. So, where 10 or 15 or 20 years ago, it wouldn't be uncommon to see, you know, volumes spike between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00, that spike is now occurring earlier in the day and later in the evening, and that's a direct reflection of the growth trends that have taken place along the Route 128 corridor, and that, over time, will become worse. As peak spreading occurs, it places more pressure on local street systems, particularly ones that offer convenient alternate routes to those congested ways, Summer Street being an example in this case.
Could I just, I'm sorry, just interrupt. The 13 million square feet is just for development along the Route 128 corridor?
Yes.
It doesn't include development off of the 128 corridor?
Well, I've got a map that actually identifies where these are, but they're relatively proximate to the 128 corridor. Of course, you have localized impacts due to development directly on the Route 20 corridor itself. There's, most recently, Biogen IDEC, mass broken stone site, the Commons at Prospect Hills under construction as we speak. Those more localized projects are going to generate demands that could directly affect the Summer Street corridor, in fact, have been documented to do that. So, just for context, and I really wish to annoy you, oh, here it is, laser pointer. The Route 128 corridor itself is the gorilla in the room, so to speak. It generates just under 200,000 vehicle trips over a typical weekday. Just an extraordinarily high number. It is followed by a number of other routes, for instance, the Mass Pike at about 60,000 to 100,000 vehicles per day, depending on the section that you look at. The Route 20 corridor itself carries in excess of 30,000 vehicles per day, and I mentioned the level of development that will be occurring along the 128 corridor. They're shown in these yellow circles, if you will. The most prominent of those, of course, would be Commons at Prospect Hill, Westwood Station, and a series of other smaller but not unimportant development along the corridor or proximate to the corridor. That will place an incredible strain on Route 128, which today approaches or exceeds capacity during those typical peak hours. So, you see that the roadway lengths that are shown in red are at or beyond capacity. They're subject to extreme congestion, slow speeds, peak hour spreading. And you see that there are also a series of yellow and orange routes here that are near or approaching capacity. So, for instance, on Route 20, it's not uncommon to be stuck in a line that's about a mile long in the morning on a typical clear day, and likewise in the evening, as happened tonight. It's not uncommon to see a queue develop all the way from the Wailin Line to 128. So, we know that those routes are peripheral to 128 but are feeders to it and are already approaching or exceeding capacity during certain hours. So, that places extreme duress on local roadway systems, in this case, Summer Street. So, this is an example of where we are with Route 128 today. We're just below the theoretical capacity of that road. So, if it rains out, if there's a snowstorm, if there's a shoulder crash or a breakdown, that may seem unimportant, but it directly influences how Route 128 works. 128 today is 90 to 95 percent utilization, and regional growth or any other incident that might occur pushes it over that volume threshold where you have extreme queuing and slow speeds and where people begin to seek alternate routes based on what their GPS is saying or based on their knowledge of the local roadway system. So, that brings us to the Summer Street corridor itself, understanding the basis of why we're studying this and how it's actually serving as a bypass to 128 today, or important concepts to understand as we get into focusing on that quarter. Interesting thing about Summer Street, it's about a mile and a half long from Route 20 all the way down to River Road, right? River Road and Route 20 really are the gateways. You can divide Summer Street into three distinct segments based on speed regulation. So, you've got the Norlally section here, up to and including, I believe it's Greystone Lane, the area vicinity. It's a regulatory 20 mile an hour zone. The Central section here is a regulatory 25 mile an hour zone, and then the southerly portion in this vicinity, adjacent to the Mass Pike, I'm sorry, 128 95 corridor, is a 30 mile an hour zone. Within that area, if you begin, and this may not be extremely clear based on scale, but we'll begin from the Route 20 side, right? The corridor alignment, you see, is more in the south, oriented slightly differently, slightly differently than what I showed you in that last graphic, but starting at Route 20, Gateway. It's not uncommon to see vehicles that are approaching from Biogen IDEC, headed back in the afternoon toward Weston here, have to merge into a single lane, which creates a pinch point of sorts. And looking back toward 128, as what this picture shows, it's not uncommon for folks to be making left turns into Summer Street and forcing people to have to travel in the shoulder area to bypass them, right? This particular picture was actually taken in August of this year. There was an incident at that time in which there were seven vehicles queued to make a left turn onto Summer Street. Summer Street, under that circumstance, was being used as a bypass to Route 128, and it exacerbated, made worse, this whole issue of the rather abrupt transition from two lanes to one, and it has kind of a domino effect to how traffic operates along Route 20. So, the gateway itself is subject to congestion, collisions, delays. As you work your way down Summer Street, we're in the 20 mile an hour zone, the alignment is rather abrupt. You almost immediately come upon a very sharp corner. The roadway width is between 16 and 18 feet wide. There are many roadside obstructions. There are trees, walls, posts, mailboxes, all right up to the pavement edge. It deserves the designation of being a 20 mile an hour zone, and as I'll speak to in a few moments, it doesn't operate that way, and that's a concern. As you proceed to the 25 mile an hour zone, the roadway widths tend to open up a bit, right? So, you'll see that roadway widths begin to open up to 20 to 22 feet. There are fewer roadside obstructions. There are portions of the road that are, in fact, they have clear zones of sorts, so you can see incoming vehicles. Sightlines are less of an issue. And then, as you proceed to go to the 30 mile an hour zone, the roadway can be as wide as 30 feet, and you have large straight sections of roadway that encourage higher travel speeds. So, that's the context in which we're understanding the roadway. It's an 18 to 30 foot wide roadway. It's divided into three distinct speed segments. One of the data collection points that was undertaken in the spring was to actually look at the hourly traffic fluctuations on Summer Street, and we did so in each of those three zones. This is data that's representative of a typical weekday, beginning at midnight here and ending at midnight here the following day. You'll see that there are very distinct peaking characteristics to Summer Street. So, between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, you'll see a rather abrupt change in volume. It goes from almost nothing, you know, until 5:00, 5:00 AM, it starts to creep up at 6:00. By 7:00 AM, the two-way traffic flow on the streets, about 130 cars, and then at about 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, it peaks up to around 200, just over 200 vehicles per hour. But then it comes down abruptly where it situates at less than 100 vehicles per hour during the middle of the day, and then it does the same trend in the afternoon, upwards of 200 vehicle trips per hour, and then drops abruptly during the evening hours. So, very classic example of a local collector roadway that's, whose primary function is to get residents, in this case, to or from regional highway systems. Very distinct. What's also shown here in orange is the direct effect of an incident that occurred on Route What happened in that instance was that, it was an afternoon incident that occurred around 3:30 in the afternoon. People began using Summer Street as a bypass, and we've actually been able to quantify what happens and to what extent under that circumstance. You'll see that the most dramatic changes occurred right at the heart of the commuter hour and just slightly beyond the traditional commuter hour. So, where the roadway would typically carry 200 vehicles per hour, it jumps to 271, and where ordinarily would only carry 100 vehicles per hour, it was above 200 per hour. So, we had a 50 to 100 percent increase in traffic activity on Summer Street that was directly related to an incident that occurred on 128. So, that's an example of the extreme variation in traffic that occurs on a fairly frequent basis, we believe, is a direct result of external factors and the proximity of Summer Street to Route 20 and River Road, you know, a convenient bypass. We also know, it's not annotated on this graphic, that during this morning peak hour, 215 vehicles per hour that the Biogen IDEC facility itself generates 15 percent of that activity. 30 or more vehicle trips per hour are directly associated with folks who are headed to the Biogen IDEC site. That's documented in the monitoring reports that were submitted to the town.
Is that the same thing in the afternoon?
The afternoon is not as much an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really a morning, predominantly a morning issue, and I suspect if you're coming up from Mayock or Framingham or Metro West generally, that you would make a cautious decision, or maybe your GPS is telling you, don't get on 128 North, just seek an alternate route, and that's what's happening. So, a substantial amount of the traffic that's on Summer Street is not being generated by Summer Street. It's really through traffic or bypass traffic, and that, over time, will increase in frequency, duration, and volume. Travel speeds-
May I ask, the averages derived in that chart were averages over about a month?
These were actually averages over about a one-week period in the spring, right? I mentioned that we did counts in each one of the speed zones. We actually have several days of data for each one of those speed zones, and it shows a very consistent pattern that's representative in this graphic. And we had the good or bad fortune to actually see an event happen and quantify it. It really underscored-
Is the building fully occupied yet?
No, that's another good point, and that is, at the time, these surveys were done, there were somewhere in the order of 1,000 employees at the Biogen IDEC facility. It's not at full occupancy, and it is permitted for a higher level of occupancy and intensity than what's being used as currently.
Is Biogen IDEC leaving? I thought they were going to move back into-
It's December, I think.
Yeah, I think they may be transitioning.
Right, so they're leaving, so this is a wild start.
Yeah, I mean, we know that there's a direct influence because of that site, and that influence could be greater than it is now or what it has recently been, depending on who the tenant is and what the intensity is.
Or the multiple tenants.
Correct.
If they happen to-
That's right. So, we've also conducted speed surveys, detailed speed surveys, that highlight and underscore a point, and that is, if you work from north to the south, right, this is the norlally 20 mile an hour zone, this is the central 25 mile an hour zone, this is the southerly 30 mile an hour zone, you'll see each of these red lines represents what those speed limits are, and you can see the actual speeds are consistently 10 miles an hour higher, consistently. These aren't the maximum speeds. People actually travel quite fast above and beyond what was shown here, but the 85th percentile speed is actually consistently 10 miles an hour above what the posted regulatory speed limits are. We were really surprised to see that, given the alignment, the width, the presence of roadside features, trees, post poles, but it was-
I always thought in the 20 mile an hour zone, when you had sort of all those traffic coming up, it was right close.
Yes.
Made no difference. They're still over 10 miles.
Now, I suspect that one of the reasons that this happens is that people who travel along Summer Street do so on a regular basis.
They know.
They know, they understand, they're comfortable with what they're up against, and they feel comfortable going 10 miles an hour above those limits. Doesn't mean it's safe or appropriate, particularly during winter time seasons or other periods, but that's what it is. Well, another aspect of what we looked at were crashes, and the Police Department was very good to give us five years' worth of crash records, not only for the Summer Street corridor itself, but for the two gateway locations that serve it. And the most prominent finding of that data really related to the Gateway at Route 20. This is really interesting. Over a five-year period between 2008 and 2012, this is Summer Street, this is the Route 20 corridor, there were some 22 reported crashes with a very distinct trend. You'll see that the transition that was built as part of the Biogen IDEC project, right, the conversion of two lanes down to a single lane, occurs over a rather abrupt distance. It's not actually to an ash tow industry standard. It's about half what the standard would call for. And a direct result of that is that there are many sideswipe-type crashes that are occurring at that pinch point. It just simply comes up too fast, and people are making abrupt transitions to get into the single lane. The second trend that we noticed is that the left turn movements into Summer Street result in a fairly high recurrence of rear-end collisions, and people who, you know, come up on them suddenly, they're paying attention to how they're merging, and all of a sudden there's someone in front of them that stopped, and there's a rear-end collision. While there is some ability to bypass this in the shoulder area, it's not a full lane, and it's at the very terminal point of a high-speed transition.
Did we actually, I mean, didn't they come back to us and extend that merge?
Yeah, we had actually reviewed that original design. The original design was half the length of what was-
There was no merge.
Yeah, there was no merge.
No merge.
And so, the most expeditious solution at the time was to actually double the length that was originally anticipated. Still wasn't enough, and you still have issues like this happening. So, that was the primary finding. Now, we also know that along the corridor of Summer Street, there were seven crashes over that five-year period. It's not an extraordinarily high rate of crashes, but most of the crashes actually involve fixed objects and single-vehicle crashes, not dual-vehicle crashes. So, it's not, if you take a drive down Summer Street, you'll see a lot of trees missing bark, let me put it that way. Folks who do crash there, we've got the incident reports, but I suspect there are many more crashes that don't go over reported. I didn't actually bring that slide with me, but it's indicative of high speeds, roadside obstacles on narrow roadways. A lot of those crashes actually happened in the 20 mile an hour section. River Road had far less of an issue. So, volumes, speeds, safety data were evaluated and served as the basis for understanding what kind of mitigation actions might be appropriate for the Summer Street corridor and its gateways. As a point of reference, this is a graphic or a stick figure that would show the design volumes at the Route 20 Gateway and at the River Road Gateway over the next 10-year period, right? This does not reflect the occurrence of cut-through traffic. It really intended to show what we anticipate the volume conditions will be on an average basis on each of those roadways. And you'll see that the Summer Street corridor itself, where it carries about 200, a little more than 200 vehicle trips per hour today, is going to be closer to 275, 280 on an average basis, as a direct result of backfilling of Biogen IDEC space, for instance, the Commons at Prospect Point and similar projects. But if you look at the volumes on Route 20, today they approach 2,000 vehicles an hour, and it's not uncommon, because that's near the saturation point of Route 20, it's not uncommon to see a lot of backup and queuing occur. The volume conditions under this scenario are closer to 2,500 cars an hour. It's a pretty significant increase, and we expect that the reality of that situation is that you're going to have the peak spreading occur that we've observed on many of the roadways in the area. So, instead of having a peak that goes from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, it's going to start at 6:00 and it's going to end at 10:00.
Is there any good news? This is just depressing.
Yeah. They're all slightly nauseous.
Yeah. And really, this is not only a gateway to Summer Street, this is a gateway to the town, right? This is really the first, beyond the Biogen IDEC signal itself, this is still part of what I consider the gateway to the town. It's really a very critical location to plan properly. PM conditions similar. So, key issues, we know substantial traffic fluctuations occur on Summer Street. We expect that those will increase in frequency over time as conditions worsen on Route 128 as development occurs not only proximate to Route 20 but along the 128 corridor. We also know that high travel speeds prevail on all segments of Summer Street, that the, at least the upper portion, the norlally portion of the roadway, has substandard roadway geometry, both in terms of width, clear zone, and the presence of roadside obstructions. As you approach River Road, you almost have the opposite scenario happening where roadway width is substantially higher, as high as 30 feet, with clear, straight alignment, which raises concern that those types of conditions are starting to foster higher speeds and the potential for higher rates of collision and safety concerns. And finally, the gateway at Route 20, which is an apparent concern, particularly as growth exceeds 2,000 vehicle per hour threshold that currently exists in the area. So, what can the town consider doing about that? Well, safety prevails in any event. Capacity is one issue, delays are another, but safety really is paramount, and really the focus of mitigation actions that we've identified, address the safety concern first, first and foremost. And there's really four groups of these actions. There are actions that relate to what we can do at the gateway at Route 20. The second relates to traffic calming measures that could be implemented along the Summer Street corridor to help moderate travel speeds and enhance safety. The third relates to potential enforcement considerations. This is where the Police Department comes in, and understanding, they don't have all the resources in the world, there may be ways that the town could approach monitoring of the corridor, which I'll speak to in a moment, that would allow for a very precise way to enforce speeds during particular days of the week or hours of the day, days of the month. And then finally, the consideration of how to perhaps reduce the presence of through traffic on the roadway, which could include actions like a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion.
Was there a lot of heavy commercial vehicles found?
There were, yeah. Actually, we documented a fair number of commercial vehicles that were used in the corridor. For a combination of uses, one, local travel, UPS.
Right.
Construction vehicles that might have been working on a property, landscaping vehicles, things of that nature. Commercial vehicles that have a local destination along Summer Street, that's one group of vehicles. The other were really vehicles that were just headed to Route 30 and didn't want to get on the bike, I mean, the 128 corridor, I'm sorry.
Literally like 18-wheelers, just-
We didn't see any 18-wheelers, but I've got some pictures of the types of vehicles that we did see. So, here's, let's start with the gateway. I recall, this group of shots kind of represents what happens at that pinch point. This is what you typically see, weekday afternoons, people are fighting their way back to Points West, and they're having to merge in a rather abrupt way. This is a reverse view. This is looking back toward 128, so Summer Street would be on the right here. This vehicle is actually making a left turn, and although the picture doesn't show this entirely, there were actually, there's actually a queue of seven vehicles here attempting to make that particular turn, and you can see that forces folks in the shoulder area in the tight quarters. So, we've developed a concept level plan that could service a mitigation initiative by the town that would essentially take what is today the two-lane section that urges to one and extend that full two-lane section all the way up to Summer Street, right? And then you'd have the opportunity, on a fairly tangent piece of Route 20, to provide an appropriate transition to a single lane according to national standards. It wouldn't require substantial widening of the roadway, but it would require some. So, we've developed a concept level plan that could serve as a mitigation initiative by the town, that would essentially take what is today the two-lane section that merges to one and extend that full two-lane section all the way up to Summer Street, right? And then you'd have the opportunity, on a fairly tangent piece of Route 20, to provide an appropriate transition to a single lane, according to national standards. It wouldn't require substantial widening of the roadway, but it would require some. It could be done entirely within the right-of-way that exists on Route 20, and it would really have two primary benefits. One is a gentler transition, if you will, merging two lanes of traffic through a curve to a straight section where you have, you meet the standard for transition taper. And the second, in the event a vehicle is queued making, trying to make that left turn, you have a full lane and a portion of a shoulder which to bypass the vehicle, so you've got far less conflict potential in that scenario.
So, it encourages more people to actually make that turn?
Well, it's still not an easy turn, so I don't think it's actually encouraging. What it's doing is taking what is today a single lane, which is being queued, and converting it into a de facto storage lane. So, it's not making it easier for the left turn.
What if you just can't turn left?
You'd be amazed how long people would wait there to make that left.
No, I mean.
He's saying exclusion.
Oh, no left entry, yeah. Actually, it's funny, Supery actually implemented that in section of roadway that connects to Route 20, and I was always curious about it, because if I'm a resident of Summer Street and there's a formal prohibition of making left turns, it puts the police department in kind of an awkward spot in terms of enforcement and the practicality of actually.
And yet, it works in towns like Lincoln.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah.
They have one-way roads.
Oh, sure. No, I don't dispute that at all. We considered that, and it's something we could pursue in further discussion with the police department, engineering, planning, et cetera. My own opinion is that it may not be entirely effective, but it's certainly something we can take a good hard look at, understand the ramifications of. So, you know, conceptually, that was one idea that we've developed that seems to be a flowing, you know, it just flows from what was recently built here.
What happens to the sidewalk?
Well, interesting, when this improvement was built, they actually removed some of the sidewalk along the southerly portion of Route 20. We didn't realize that until recently, but all that remains of the sidewalk in this edge is this little piece. There is sufficient right-of-way along this section of Route 20 to build a sidewalk.
Nobody walks on the sidewalk.
But, yeah, exactly. I don't know that there's any inherent benefit to it at this point.
But what happens, I mean, that was very important to Mass Highway when the Broken Stone Project was being developed, to keep that sidewalk open.
Right.
That's why we went through that whole, we're going to roll with a path through the woods kind of.
Yeah, so the path, there's kind of a circuitous way to get, you know, from, well, they'll say you want to, well, God forbid you want to go and walk over to the Dunkin' Donuts at the gas station, but let's say you did. You know, you'd actually have to circumnavigate kind of a nonlinear path, right? So, you're walking through the woods. It's a nice pleasant walk, but it's not a direct path. There's no sidewalk remaining on this edge.
There was none left, there was no room left.
Right, there's no room left.
You'd have to go somewhere.
You're kind of going around like Sparring here to connect it, but once you get to that point, the sidewalk actually does continue, and we're proposing that that continue to be the case.
So, does that mean you have to move the stone wall?
No.
Is enough room with the existing sidewalk to widen the road and not have to move the stone wall?
Yes, the pinch point to that stone wall really was right around here, and that's why that sidewalks are missing, right? In fact, a small portion of this area is also called a pinch point. Once you get beyond it, there's sufficient area to provide the widening. In fact, a portion of that widening could actually occur on the southerly side of the road. So, we think that you probably retain most of what's there today by way of sidewalk. But, you know, subject to further dedication. We think this is certainly feasible. We haven't identified a specific cost range for that improvement, but it's likely to be more than a couple hundred thousand dollars.
If it were, if you didn't, if you weren't able to turn left on Summer Street, the strategy would be to just go down the road a little bit and turn left onto Rolling. I recognize Rolling, I think, is a private road.
It may be.
But still, if you're a resident on Summer Street, you don't have to go all the way through West if you get onto Summer Street. You could go through Rolling, and then you wind up in the middle of Summer Street, you can go either way.
Right, right, and I suspect that some people might understand that you can do that, but the Biogen iDex traffic monitoring reports did in fact look at the Rolling Lane quarter as well, and it has absolutely no impact whatsoever from, at least that development, and it's a very low-volume street.
Well, right now, it doesn't, but let's just say we make it no left turn between three and six p.m. Does that then go up to Rolling Lane?
That could be a consequence. That absolutely could be a consequence, and that's why I say we can take a good hard look at that, but that may be one of the outcomes, is that it forces an issue onto a street you don't want to force it to. You know, our primary objective was not capacity per se, it's safety, where we have identified safety issues occurring here today, and here today, this addresses both of those. It doesn't preclude the possibility that at some point in the future, this could become signalized. One of the findings of our study was that Summer Street actually does meet a signal warrant based on today's volumes, right? It meets three of the eleven warrants that would suggest that it could be signalized. Now, I'm not suggesting that it should be, whether it's appropriate.
I would think that would just totally encourage all kinds of traffic to just activate the signal.
Well, I concern, yeah, my concern would be that it's relatively close to the signal, so they'd have to be coordinated. You'd be giving some deference to Summer Street, so you'd be making it easier for folks to use Summer Street as a cut-through. There are other secondary considerations that would need to go into that.
Well, that begs the question, what do we want to get out of this?
Yeah.
Do we want to discourage traffic from taking Summer Street, or do we want to make Summer Street less of a challenge for people that take it?
I think it's, it lies somewhere in the middle. I think, I place myself in the position of a resident of Summer Street. I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would encourage people to use Summer Street as a through route. However, I'd also be concerned that, to the extent that does happen, and I am a resident, I want to make sure that things were reasonably safe, that the conditions on the roadway weren't hazardous, both for my sake and the sake of others.
But they don't like it on Summer Street. They don't like Summer Street.
Summer Street is a peucolic.
The people who live there, they sort of, they don't like it.
It's that they probably won't get into it being rear-ended in forty-five miles an hour.
No, I know. That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying.
So, there's the delicate balance, and so, what we've identified as a second set of suggested measures would be traffic calming measures that are not intended to in any way make it easier to use Summer Street, but address the speed issue particularly, and enhance driver awareness of how fast they are going, using a series of means, physical signs, pavement markings, et cetera. What's shown on here are really kind of two levels of traffic calming. You'll see that there are these yellow dashed areas. These are zones in which we suggest the town consider placing one of several types of traffic calming measures. These are gateways that either represent a transition from one speed zone to another, or that are related to a long stretch of straight roadway, or that might relate to a sharp curve. These are trigger points along the quarter where we feel that.
Were these traffic calming measures on the signs?
Well, let's go, here's some ideas. So, speed advisory radars, right? People react, motorists react very well, in my experience, to information that's in front of them, real-time information. And so, here's an example of a speed radar assembly that actually shows you what your travel speed is relative to the posted regulatory speeds. These are being placed at a fairly frequent basis in many communities. In Marlboro, where I have my office, is one near my office.
We have a couple here, tell me.
We have one by the school.
Right, the school has those, and, you know, people, I think people by law want to do the right thing, they just lose track. And if they travel along a route on a fairly frequent basis and they're comfortable with it, they may not be aware that they're going thirty in a twenty mile an hour zone. So, the intention of these signs is to heighten their awareness of how fast they're really going and how fast they should be going, and these are pretty effective in helping to reduce speeds based on that information. These can be placed in each of the speed zones along the quarter. They're fairly unobtrusive, it's not like you've got a blinking light in your front yard or anything like that, as you can see here. This is blacked out most of the time, it's only triggered when it detects the presence of a vehicle. Now, on Summer Street, that means that in the middle of the day, you've got a hundred cars an hour, it's one or two cars a minute, you know, this thing's being triggered fairly infrequently, it's maybe thirty seconds or so, a minute.
How long do they last?
They go off, as soon as you go past the sign.
No, no.
Lifetime of this sign.
Well, there are solar-powered options for these. In fact, we're implementing one of these for St. Mark's School in Southborough as we speak, and for the town of Southborough. They're, you can use solar-powered option, that's our preferred method because they're fairly inexpensive to operate at that point. They have lifespan, it's at least five years based on battery life.
How much do they cost?
An installation like this right here is about eight to ten thousand dollars.
Whoa.
But, understanding, you know, these are actually relatively low-cost measures. Now, as we've walked through these and you add up the totals for the quarter, these are the most cost-effective ways to reduce speeds and calm traffic. It sounds like it's an expensive measure, but when you compare it to a roadway widening.
I just wish I made them.
Yeah.
It could cost them ten thousand dollars to make them.
Go ahead.
So, let's talk about other measures. This is another type of measure, it involves speed humps, not to be confused with speed bumps, these are much different, they have a much different effect. Speed humps, these are elements that have a parabolic design that are typically twelve, sometimes fifteen feet wide. They introduce a gentle change in elevation of the roadway. If you try to travel over these at more than twenty miles an hour, you know it, your car's going to buck and honk and do everything else. But up to the twenty mile an hour standard, they're very unobtrusive. Those could be implemented at certain zones within the Summer Street quarter that are appropriate. They could be combined with a center channelizing element that's flush, it could be a serrated concrete, stamped asphalt, things of that nature, that give you the visual perception of a roadway that isn't thirty feet wide, but it's much narrower.
Can you imagine the cost of that?
Yeah, well, let's look at, this is a location in Southborough, this is a speed hump right here.
Right.
You see there's a little hand.
This is a center thing.
I'm sorry.
Do you have one of those center things?
You know, I don't have a picture of one.
I've never seen one.
If you go to, if you just, if you go to the new Weyland Town Center.
The new Scottsdale?
The new Scottsdale, you're coming from Route 20, and you make a right on to the road going towards Sudbury, you'll see they have these no right turn signs, if you go up to Second Street, the street that goes up there, they put up a whole bunch of speed humps if you want to go through.
I know the speed humps, but it's it.
Et cetera, yeah, and.
What's it interest us?
What's it got speed bumps?
Yeah, bumps.
Right, but this is the element that you're talking about.
Yeah, I just interested in that.
That is being used, I mean, for instance, there's Marblehead, I think I've quoted this, they actually take the W. Elsensel line, which is typically only a foot wide, right? And they make it three feet wide, and they put scoring in the pavement, and it gives a visual picture to the driver that the lane width goes from twelve down to ten, you know, and as a result, and there are studies that show this, the speed differentials go from, you know, whatever, forty miles an hour down to thirty-six. I mean, there's a real net benefit to giving a visual cue to the driver that the lanes are narrowing up on you. So, really, this is two different types of methods that in this example are being used in combination, but it doesn't have to be used in combination, these are just examples of where, why you apply this.
Can you explain the cost, just to?
We're still in the process of identifying specific costs depending on which elements you combine or don't combine, but to give you an idea of what a speed hump might cost, these typically go for around three thousand dollars or so, okay, installed. Depends how many you do it at the same time, you know, where.
How about those ones that are just movable, the rubberized ones that you can get, you know, they're a lot less expensive.
Speed cushions of sorts, yeah.
I think they're a lot less expensive.
There may be maintenance issues with those, you know, one of the considerations is, and this is a public works issue typically, what happens when we're out there plowing? Or an emergency responder, what happens when we try to get our fire truck for me to be, or ambulance, or police car? And those are the types of conversations we're going to have with town staff and department heads, but there are ways to design around those things. The precast type of systems that you're talking about, not as adaptable in certain circumstances, but could be on the table, we could certainly, well, I've got spec sheets on those, they could be absolutely a consideration, and they could be more cost-effective in certain So, these types of things are being used in other communities effectively. Another aspect here has more to do with pavement markings than anything. I mentioned that there are sections of road that are upwards of thirty feet wide, particularly in the thirty mile an hour zones. There's a notion referred to as road diet, right, that attempts to take what is a fairly wide section of road and to make it feel like it's not as wide, and as a result, psychologically indicates to the driver that speeds should be reduced as a result. So, typically, that could include strapping to show nine-foot travel lanes with two to five-foot shoulders, you know. Physically, you can still travel on the shoulder, you could use it in that capacity under various conditions, if it's snowy or wet, you still have maneuvering area on the road, but visually, a nine-foot lane tends to slow people down.
Isn't that essentially what we've got on the Route 20 westbound?
Yeah.
In the merge there?
In a way.
Is that where that space is coming from? We'll just change our markings?
Yeah, well, here's an example of how this works. Here's a section near Cedar Street, right? This is about twenty-eight feet wide right here. You could actually create about four to five foot shoulders with nine foot lanes that visually, if you compare these two, and you're a motorist, has a dramatic effect on how you travel on that road. These can be placed with thermoplastic markings so they're longer lasting, you know, it's a fairly inexpensive way to provide positive driver guidance, that's the best way to put it, positive driver guidance. At nighttime, when the edge of road isn't quite as clear as it is during the day, these markings, if they're thermoplastic, they actually have glass beads and then things of that nature that really illuminate at night, are not obtrusive, fairly low cost, really provide a huge benefit, cost benefit, in terms of helping to reduce speeds, enhance safety, promote clear zones, right, in shoulder areas that are, I think, a fairly important feature, should be an important feature along Summer Street. Now, we can talk a little bit about enforcement. Knowing that speed is an issue on Summer Street, one measure could be periodic enforcement of speeds, and that could be a very effective way to alert motorists that if they consciously are going above the speed limit, especially ten miles above the speed limit, that they have a strong chance of getting ticketed, and it's a strong disincentive. But there are also limited resources at the police level in terms of staffing, have patrols out there on any kind of a regular basis. We've actually got a piece of equipment in our office, it's made by a manufacturer out of Pennsylvania, J-Mar, it's a speed radar recorder device. Its primary function, when it was developed, was actually for speed enforcement. What it is, is a fairly unobtrusive black box that you can hang on a telephone pole, tree, post, blends right in.